Ethan, we're gonna get started in just a bit here. Alright, we're just waiting for people to join up, so. Alright, so I've got everybody so far. You may have noticed that I finally got the tests in the book, so, and then also grades for your final drafts. And I, like I said at the beginning of the year, I'm generous with the extra credit when it comes to the project, so. If you don't have it in yet, please get it to me. Alright.
My sister brought my computer.
Alright, well, I believe this is where we left off, was the populist party. Somebody in sixth period tell me, is that right? Or am I, am I off by a slide? Anyone, sixth block?
Yeah, this is where we left off.
This is where we left off, okay. So we were talking about the Omaha platform, how radical it was, especially the part where they talk about government ownership of utilities, railroads and telegraph services. That's obviously socialist. And in the election of eighteen ninety-two. Got another person coming in. It is obvious that the populist party is a force to be reckoned with, because for the first time in a long time, a third party breaks into the electoral column and breaks into it in a big way. Taking a number of western states that could have helped the Republicans. Also, the Republicans' strategy of cheating doesn't work again the second time, because people were ready for them. A lot of people are upset about the corruption that kind of ran rampant when the Republicans were in control. And so as a result, Grover Cleveland's home state of New York. And Illinois, Indiana, Wisconsin, all went Democrats, and California went Democrat as well. And as a result, making sure I get everybody who just joined. As a result, Grover Cleveland is going to win his second term in office as the only United States president to ever win two non-consecutive terms. So that makes him our twenty-second president and our twenty-fourth president. But that second term of Grover Cleveland's is a rough term, because during this term, the financial crisis that has been brewing ever since the ICC began, you know, telling railroads, you can't, you can't charge ridiculously unfair rates. Is going to come to a head, and that, of course, is going to make things very difficult in a number of ways, so. Cleveland is going to reduce the tariff substantially for the first time in American history with the Wilson-Gorman tariff. Because, you know, and, and you know, granted, his, his original tariff reduction bill would have, you know, been very simple, but Congress basically added six hundred amendments to it. So, you know, they were able to raise the tariff in special categories. And, you know, Grover Cleveland wanted the bill, but he didn't want to sign it, so he just allowed it to become law without signing it. And, and so in many ways, people who were really progressive and anti-corruption saw it as a failure because of all of the amendments that were added to it. Now, this is actually kind of a, an interesting little aside here in terms of a number of things. You know, every so often, there would be a world's fair in a, in a city somewhere in the world, and of course, it was a big honor for a country to host it, because all of the latest inventions would be showcased, you know, the, the architecture, you know, for it would be, you know, the, the latest, it would be, you know, kind of like be a showcase of the latest, you know, styles and beautifying cities and whatnot. And in eighteen ninety-three, Chicago got the honor of hosting the World's Colombian Exposition, as it was called, and the, the whole thing was, was an architectural wonder, because it was created by Daniel Burnham, who was part of this city beautiful movement to redesign cities with what they called the Bo Arts Sculpture Trees, etc. So this is all kind of following along the stuff with Frederick Law Olmsted that we talked about earlier. And the buildings were all white, you know, and had, had, they brought back some of the columns of the old, you know, Greek and Roman architecture, but, you know, in a much different style. So they called it the White City, and this is also where Tesla versus Edison, kind of the, the current war, came to a, a final conclusion, because Tesla was given the contract for lighting up the World's exposition and, or the Chicago World's Fair, and did it with one generator. So that kind of put a final nail in the coffin of the DC electricity movement. Has anyone ever heard of America's first serial killer, H.H. Holmes? Has anyone ever heard of a, an award-winning book called Devil in the White City? No? Great book. It's about a serial killer named H.H. Holmes, who had a building. It was, it was a hotel with deadly traps in it, where he killed somewhere between twenty-seven and two hundred people before he was caught in eighteen ninety-four, and he was very active during the Chicago World's Fair, so kind of an interesting, you know, little aside in history, the first famous serial killer in American history is H.H. Holmes. Alright, and so that takes us to a, yes, Nick, go ahead.
When we're talking like traps, like what kind do you know in detail, like, so the traps he laid out, this little murder castle?
I had, I had some of my students in a school before, I was at Spring Hill, do a, a National History Day project on it, and they had, like, great detail. There were, like, little nooses that would, like, like, I forget exactly how it worked though, but, like, it's, it's now, a lot of it is escaping my memory, but, yeah, there were some really interesting little traps, you know, where, where, where people would be, like, trapped in something, and then they would die, they would suffocate. They would, you know, I know there was, you know, but I can't remember any of the, the extra details, but really, it's, it's, it's a fascinating story, and if you are bored and you want a, kind of a good book to read, Devil in the White City is an amazing book, so. Yeah, I wish, I wish some of, some of that was fresher in my memory, but it's, it's been a while since, since I've refreshed my memory on it, unfortunately. And we have, excuse me, a, a history professor that actually makes history, so to speak. Frederick Jackson Turner is a professor of history at the University of Wisconsin, and at the World's Fair in Chicago in eighteen ninety-three, he presents a paper of his that probably is one of the most famous history papers ever written. It's called The Significance of the Frontier in American History. And basically, he says that we have always had, and he's basing this off of the census of eighteen ninety, but he's like, we've always had the wilderness with us, the frontier, the wild untamed frontier in America, and we can now officially say that the frontier is closed. The, the, the great, you know, stretches of wilderness in the West have been settled. And he's like, what has this done to our country? What has having the great wilderness of the West, you know, always on the edge of our country, what has that done to American character? So, anybody want to answer that question before, before I tell you what his answer was? What, what do you think having that, you know, that, that wilderness, you know, that untamed wilderness as a part of our land did to American character to make us different from, say, Europeans? Any, anyone have any thoughts on that at all? Nick, I see your hand is up, but I don't know if you just forgot to lower it, or if you-
I forgot to lower it, sorry.
Nobody? Oh, alright, well, it's an interesting question, you know, what, what does having that wilderness, you know, do to your, your character as a people? And really, Turner's answer to that question is that it, it kind of creates this rugged individualism in Americans that you don't find in other parts of the world. That, you know, Americans are more daring, they're more willing to take risks to go out into, you know, that wilderness and try to carve out an existence. And that has really kind of left its stamp on, on the character of, of Americans. So he's like, what is the future hold for our country now that that's gone? Like, you know, is, are Americans going to become quote-unquote "soft and civilized"? Like, you know, some other parts of the world where people have lost touch with what it's like to try to survive on the frontier and, and tame the great wilderness? Yeah, go ahead, Chase.
Did anyone really propose a counterargument to that, like any business officials or anyone else?
I mean, there are going to be papers that are written in opposition, you know, to the Turner thesis that say that, you know, number one, no, the frontier isn't closed. Look at this area, this area, this area, there's still wilderness, you know, here, or, you know, they would dispute his his proposition that it has had such an indelible kind of impact on American character, but this really is kind of, you know, it becomes a mainline historical argument that that, you know, it, that the frontier really has had a huge impact on American character. And, you know, it, it obviously has its share of critics, but, you know, this is kind of like the interpretation that a lot of historians still point back to. Anybody have any thoughts on whether we're different than other people in other parts of the world? And is it related to struggling against the great wilderness of the North American continent? The, you know, the, the Native Americans, the, you know, the elements, etc. Has it made Americans different? Yeah, Max, go ahead.
Well, I feel like, you know, back then, back then, obviously, we're different, because we have, we have the wilderness, we have the frontier to deal with. But as you kind of conquer the frontier and tame the frontier, and you become just an entirely modernized society, I feel like you stray closer to what Europe is, where everyone is just sitting on their couch watching TV, because you don't really have to go out and build a house in the wilderness and hunt that buffalo because you're hungry, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so we've, we've become soft. We're, we're a bunch of, we're a bunch of softies now, is, is what you're saying. Alright, Brayden, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Um, I, you know, I feel like we're still very different from the rest of the world, like, and I, I don't know if it's because we had that start where, you know, we, we were different because of the wilderness, and we just kind of went along a different path than the rest of the world, but I do, I do think that somewhere along the line, we just kind of branched off from the way everyone else was going, and now we're just kind of like a unique little civilization we got going on, you know?
And, and what would you say would be the most unique characteristics that set us apart from everyone else, like?
Well, I feel like in a lot of ways, Americans have kind of devolved. Like, we largely, like, we don't really value education that much. Like, there, there's a large part of our population that just doesn't care about.
Oh, you cut out, Brayden. Brayden? Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
For a second, so there, you said there was a large part of our population that doesn't care about, and then I couldn't catch the rest of it.
Yeah, there's a large part of our population that just doesn't care about being educated, and I don't know if that's the same in other countries, but that seems to be very prevalent in ours, and I just feel like that kind of sets us apart from a lot of other places.
Okay, so, so education, alright, very good. And then Ethan, what were you gonna add?
In terms of like, how with the wilderness and stuff, I think it's not that so much we're different, it's just we kind of started later.
Okay.
Basically, other countries had to go through phases like that. We just kind of had a much later start to that and kind of had to play catch-up.
Okay, alright, yeah, that's a very interesting take, so, you know, like, that, that character of, you know, having to struggle against the great wilderness was part of European countries, but just way further back in history. Is what you're saying. Okay, alright, yeah, I like that. Alright, so that is the Turner thesis, and of course, it is probably the most famous history thesis in all of American history, and of course, it, it, it created a, a significant amount of discussion at the Chicago World's Fair as well. So that takes us to what is going to be the story of Grover Cleveland's second, second term, and that is the panic of eighteen ninety-three. So I, I mentioned this already in class, but when the Interstate Commerce Commission had been created in Cleveland's first term, it created a situation where railroads were slowly being strangled by all of their debt, and they were unable to make up for it by raising the rates in areas where they had monopolies, because the federal government was stepping in and saying, you can't charge these ridiculously unfair rates. And so they had been treading water, they had been taking out loans, they had been doing everything they could think of to kind of, you know, stay solvent, but finally, one of the big ones goes under in eighteen ninety-three, and that's the Reading Railroad. It's in Pennsylvania, and of course, it's part of monopoly, so it's, you know, it's one of the ones that people have heard of. And that causes a stock market panic, as people begin to realize that owning railroad stocks is not a good idea right now, because a lot of railroads are in the same boat that the Reading Railroad's in. And of course, this just creates the perfect storm where railroads who had been hoping to raise capital through their stock are, have that last hope dashed, and and as their stock price plummets, they are tipped over the edge into insolvency as well. And of course, you know, as people are trying to sell, sell, sell all of these railroad stocks, and the bank stocks that are connected to the railroads, because a lot of these railroads had taken out massive loans from these banks, and if the railroad goes under and, and goes bankrupt and can't pay back those loans, then the banks are on the hook as well, and, and those banks are in, in danger of going under, and so of course, then people start making runs on the banks, trying to get their money out before you know, the bank goes under, and of course, the banks have most of the money out in loans, and so as depositors come back and demand all of their money, the banks are just, get to a point where they're unable to pay their depositors and have to close their doors. And so this creates a massive economic kind of mini-depression, where fifteen thousand businesses shut their doors, five hundred banks go under, and unemployment hits nineteen percent across the country, which is like, a good, almost a fifth of the entire country is kicked out of work. People basically end up, you know, in little shanty towns made out of trash outside of major cities, because they have no place to go. And the, the country is in a crisis, and so we've talked about this before. And, and once again, we have an American president who has to make a terrible choice. Save the people who are suffering, who need help, or save the value of the dollar. And you could draw some parallels to today as well. But in all of the financial panics before this, what has every American president always ended up choosing? When you have to, you have a large number of people who are out of work, who are suffering, who are like, you know, homeless essentially, and starving, and you have the, the value of the dollar in danger, because, you know, there's a crisis of confidence, lack of, you know, gold, etc. in, in the treasury. Yes, Ethan?
It's always the dollar.
It's always the dollar, because, you know, it's like, okay, yeah, twenty percent of the country is starving, but eighty percent of the country is going to also be starving if the dollar collapses. So that, that's the responsible thing to do. Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
So what would happen if they had chose the people instead of the money? Like, do we have like an idea, or is it sort of just hypothetical at the moment?
Well, actually, you're asking an excellent question, because that is what's going to happen during the Great Depression. Is, you're gonna have a president who does what presidents have always done. He's gonna save, he's gonna choose to save the dollar, and he's going to get politically destroyed for it, and then you're going to have a president who is going to, for the first time in American history, choo- choose to save the people. And he's going to have to do something to the dollar in order to do that, because when you have a big pile of gold backing up the dollar, it limits how much you can borrow, because the dollar has to be backed up by the amount of gold you have, and that means there's a limit to how much people will loan you before your currency starts, you know, like, there's, you have too much debt compared to the pile of gold you have, you know, so if he had chosen that, he might have had much, a much better time politically, but he will have a, of course, start that process of inflation where the dollar is just worth less and less, and you know, we've talked about this. You know, we have to go by how much the dollar was worth back then, because it was worth so much more versus today's dollars, you know, and, and there's always that possibility that the inflation will just get to the point where the dollar will no longer be a viable currency, so we're-
Sounds like another Great Depression, right?
Well, I mean, and, and when, in that kind of a, of a dollar disaster, the entire country, like, all the people who have jobs still, they're all in it too. Like, it's not just the group that's out of work, it's everybody. Because the dollar, the value of the dollar is what everything is based on, and that's what is in everybody's bank accounts, and so.
I think even other countries would be hurt by that, because South American countries base their currencies on the dollar.
Right, right.
What about trade, countries we trade with? Would they be affected by that too, because we no longer be able to buy them?
The bonds, I think, would be in trouble.
Oh, yeah, are you asking about at the time that we're talking?
Yeah, at the time.
We're not talking about today. We're talking about the time we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, yeah, at the time we're talking about, the reserve currency in the world is the British pound, okay, so it's not like if, it, it would be like watching, you know, like nowadays, like watching Venezuela's, you know, currency go hyper, and it was, a lot of people had invested in our stock market just because of the incredible, you know, gains you could make as companies just skyrocketed and became, you know, multimillion-dollar industries in, in this kind of, you know, untamed capitalist environment, unfettered capitalism. So there, there would be a lot of investors around the world that would be ruined. It would possibly cause, you know, some stock market crashes and other stock exchanges. But there are, we are not the hub of world finance at this time in history. In the eighteen nineties, we are not the hub. We are one of the minor kind of satellites of, of world finance. So it would be like watching, you know, Venezuela or Argentina go under, and everybody'd be like, oh, you know, and they would have to divest themselves, etc. But as we get closer and closer to World War One, you know, we're gonna become more and more
Cut out a little bit.
Center of world finance. Yeah, go ahead, Ethan, what were you gonna add?
So, well, obviously, this kind of relates to what we're going through now, speaking that forty percent of US currency was put in the last year.
Yep, yep.
And I don't think we're feeling it yet, because technically, both consumer spending and production has gone down at the same rate.
Yeah.
So we're kind of in a fragile limbo. So we're kind of in a fragile limbo. Before we're feeling the exp- effects, we're gonna feel it once the economy comes back.
You are one hundred percent correct. Um, and so, once interest rates start to rise again, um, the, the, the impact of all of this money printing and, and debt that we've been engaged in, and right, uh, out of all the dollars that have ever been printed, like, the, in the last couple of years, it's like thirty to forty percent of all the dollars that have ever been printed have been printed. Um, and, uh, in order to keep the party going, so to speak, and keep the dollar kind of in its fragile position that it's in, uh, we almost have to do negative interest rates, which actually will hurt, you know, the people who do the right thing, who save their money and, and, uh, invest wisely, et cetera. So, um.
Oh, yeah, um.
It, it, it's, it's a bit of a mess, and, um, you know, we've.
However, I think a certain theory came up recently is basically known as modern monetary theory.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get.
Economic monetary theory.
We're gonna talk about.
The government could print whatever amount of money they could, because they have the total power of currency. They can control whatever everything's worth, so they can have infinite money.
Yeah.
I find strange, but apparently they give at least some basis, or like some at least kind of convincing reasons of why.
It does, it, it's not gonna work. Um, really, you know what is the only uncontrollable currency? Uh, that can't be, it's like, it's like, it's, it's got the ultimate security. Like, you, you can't counterfeit it. You can't control it, uh, and it is really, it's worth, is based on the market, and that's Bitcoin. Uh, and so, they're saying that Bitcoin, which is now hitting forty thousand.
Saying that Bitcoin's gonna become the new currency.
I mean, it may, because people who are smart, who are seeing the coming financial storm are, are shifting their wealth over into Bitcoin. It may end up topping, um, two hundred thousand, uh, per coin, uh, to four hundred thousand per coin by just the end of this year. This tells you about that there's like going to be a big loss of confidence in the dollar. Um.
Yeah, I think it's because, um, Bitcoin is an international currency, is that you can turn it into any currency. It can be.
No, it, it. It can't be counterfeited, and it can't be controlled, because who, the person who started it, the Shiko Matsui, I forget his la- I, I forget the name, that, that's a pseudonym. We don't know who started it. And the, um, encryption, i- i- it goes into the quintillions, like, to get, like, the calc- it's like in the quintillions of calculations to get the, 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 to break the encryption. So you can't break the encryption. So it's like an unassailable, um, you know, currency that is, you know, that, that you can never break the encryption of, and you can never control.
Yeah, I think, um, the first thing, though, people need to do is, one, have confidence that it's an actual currency instead of not a money-making machine. Which is why we see massive dips and rises in the value of Bitcoin. Because really, it's just the hobby money-making machine.
It, it was this oddity, but I think that it is, it is in, for smart investors, it's going to become the alternative, uh.
I don't know, we might have Bit- they're now selling Bitcoin credit cards, so.
Uh, yeah. So anyway, uh, we, we're, we're kind of going off on a, on a, on a tangent here, but Chase, what were you gonna add?
Do you think any companies predicted these events happening, and they took advantage of them?
Um, smart people can see stuff like this coming, um, because they know how markets work, and they know, um, you know, what's going to happen. So, yeah, this was a slow-rolling disaster. Like, I mean, if you were really watching the financials of the railroads at this time in history, you could, you knew what was coming. Like, eventually, they were going to, like, go bankrupt, a lot of them. And so, you would have divested yourself of, you know, railroad stocks. And at this time, the hedge against the dollar is gold, so you would have invested in gold. Uh, still, it's a hedge against the dollar even today. But, um, yeah, so, let me just get back to the story here. Um, uh, it, basically, um, the entire financial system is in danger as, um, because we talked about the Sherman Silver Purchase Act, and remember how the Sherman Silver Purchase Ha- Act had that little caveat in it? Where it said that, um, you could redeem paper dollars and gold. And so, people had been doing that, and they had drained the treasury of gold. Well, there was like a confidence mark of like one hundred million dollars worth of gold, uh, that had to be in the US Treasury for people to feel confident that the dollar could maintain its value since it was backed by gold. And, um, because of the panic of eighteen ninety-three, more and more people were taking advantage of that. They were, they were, uh, getting out of dollars and getting into gold, so to speak. And, um, the, uh, the value of the, um, uh, dollar was now in danger as the amount of gold in the treasury slipped below the one hundred million mark. And, um, there was only one person in America that had, that was wealthy enough to bail out the US government. And that was the great titan of industry, the great monopolist, uh, JP Morgan. And so the pre- this is just an interesting kind of little scene in history. The president really goes hat in hand to JP Morgan and says to him, you know, if you don't step in, well, actually JP Morgan at first had offered, and, and the president was like, uh, I don't know if I really want to be associated with you. Uh, but eventually, the president realizes that he has to, um, take JP Morgan up on this offer that he had made to buy, uh, sixty-two million dollars worth of, uh, government bonds in gold. So JP Morgan transfers an enormous amount of gold into the US Treasury, which saves the value of the dollar. Uh, but, and of course, he's gonna make money off of this, because, you know, he's buying government bonds, which he will get back with interest within a X number of years, once the economy picks back up again. Uh, but, um, of course, that leaves the people. Okay, and this is where, um, you start to see the, the people who had been, who had lost their jobs. They had done everything right. They had worked hard, et cetera. They've played by the rules, and now they were like homeless and jobless. Uh, many of them had families, uh, you know, they, which they were trying to feed. And so, a quarry operator from Massillon, Ohio, named, uh, Jacob Coxey decides, let's go to Washington DC and basically demand that the government hire us. We will build roads, we will build bridges, we will do any kind of infrastructure, uh, you know, building that, that they want us to do. But, you know, we're willing to work, but we, but we're gonna demand that the government hire us. And of course, um, uh, he starts out with one hundred people, um, and of course, you know, he, as, as time goes, you know, by, and as they're kind of slowly getting closer and closer to the Capitol, his, his small group grows in numbers to about five hundred. But there were groups all, from all across the country that were all going to meet him there. And so, there was a prospect that there would be, you know, thousands upon thousands upon thousands of people in the capital of the United States, um, demanding that the government hire them. Um, anybody, what, what put thing that had been predicted about capitalism, does this sound like possibly it becoming? Yes, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
People uprising against the government.
Yeah.
Basically stuck up with business interests.
And, and, and who had predicted this, that, that?
Karl Marx.
Karl Marx, yeah. So it was looking like the prediction that Karl Marx had made might come true, that the poor would basically rise up and overthrow the whole system. Uh, in, and so, um, fearing that this could get out of control, and that these thousands of angry workers could, could ma- possibly, you know, storm the Capitol, so to speak. Which, again, uh, the, the, the parallels to today are interesting. Um, it basically led to, um, the government coordinating with local police in, in parts of the country to arrest people before they could get there. And so, really, Coxey ends up only getting there with five hundred protesters himself. And then they get arrested on a minor infraction, which is walking on the Capitol grass. And so, um, Coxey's army is, is, is kind of, uh, you know, they, they, they snuff it out before it can become a big thing, but it shows you how the depth of misery that the country has hit, and, and where, you know, these people are who have lost everything, who've lost their jobs and have nothing and, and have families to feed, uh, and what they're willing to do. So the whole system is kind of shuttering under this, this latest, latest financial blow. And, um, uh, the question is, you know, can people maintain their confidence in a capitalist system when they're under such financial stress? Um, now, politically, uh, there is an interesting, uh, kind of, uh, thing that happens during this time. Because, um, an unusual political alliance, uh, happens in the South. Um, and, uh, basically, uh, when, um, in the midterm elections of eighteen ninety-four, uh, Representative Thomas E. Watson, this guy right here, who is a Southern white Democrat, um, left the Democratic Party and joined the Populist Party. And then, in order to basically kind of win, he reached out to black Republicans in the South, who never won, you know, black, black farmers, and, uh, proposed that poor whites and poor blacks unite together into what became known as the Fusion Movement, where, you know, in spite of the insane racism of the South, uh, people were in such economic distress that they would, um, basically kind of set aside their racial differences and, and vote together for Fusion candidates, where they did have some notable successes in, um, places like North Carolina. Uh, they elected, uh, Representative George H. White. Um, and, uh, you know, that he's the, and the first Republican governor since Reconstruction, Daniel Russell. Um, and then, of course, there were some city officials that were, uh, elected as well, like, um, Wilmington, North Carolina, uh, city official, uh, John Campbell Dancy. So, um, uh, it is interesting to see how, um, the economic distress was causing people to set aside old racial differences, uh, and, and vote for people uh, based on class rather than on the traditional racial, you know, lines in the South. Um, and the Wilson-Gorman Tariff, which had been, uh, signed, or I'm sorry, had not been signed, but had been allowed to become law by, um, uh, President Cleveland, did contain a provision where there would be a graduated income tax on, uh, people who had incomes over five thousand dollars a year, which was considered, you know, the line of being wealthy. And, um, uh, it basically, um, becomes a, uh, Supreme Court case, because a man named Charles Par- Pollock, who owned shares of stock in Farmers Loan and Trust Company, um, was seeking to keep that company from complying with the law, where the income would be taxed. And so, um, he had lost in the lower courts, but the Supreme Court a- a- agreed to hear his case. And with, in a decision, in a five-four decision with Chief Justice Melville Fuller, um, writing for the majority, um, the court agreed with Pollock and struck down the income tax provisions of the Wilson-Gorman Tariff as a direct violation of the Constitution's prohibition on a direct income tax, because that is actually in Article One of the Constitution, that there will be no direct tax on people's incomes by the federal government. Now, of course, that doesn't mean that states can't do it, but, but the feds can't. Um, so, the Wilson Gor- Gorman Tariff, um, really looks like a, a, almost complete political defeat for Cleveland at this point, uh, because, um, the one provision that would have made the rich, you know, help pay for things, was now struck down. Um, all right, so while all of this misery is going on, um, there is some interesting kind of, uh, developments out in the world as America continues to try to build an empire. Um, and people kept saying, when we were talking about the Samoan Crisis, what about Hawaii? What about Hawaii? Well, actually, um, let's talk about Hawaii. Hawaii actually, uh, had become an independent kingdom, and had been discovered by the British, but the British realized that they just didn't have enough troops to kind of, um, overcome the natives that lived there, the Polynesian natives. And so, they had basically made a deal with them, where they were a kingdom, but they were kind of friendly to the, uh, British. And then eventually, they became just kind of this independent kingdom. Now, Americans had moved to the Hawaiian Islands, um, while it was under, um, you know, these, these kings and queens, uh, that had kind of been, you know, united all of the islands with European weapons, and then had been ruling them as, as a kingdom. Um, and, uh, there were some American plantation owners who had, you know, plantations where they grew things like pineapples and, and whatnot. And they basically, um, decided that they were gonna try to stage a takeover, um, and then invite the United States to annex Hawaii, because, you know, we were looking for territory. So, um, uh, they start a revolution in eighteen ninety-three and dethrone, um, Queen Lelou Kalani of Hawaii. And basically, um, they, they were hoping to do this while Harrison was still in office, because Harrison was a very pro-imperialist president. He's the one who built that navy, um, you know, that would allow America to build an empire. But President Term, uh, Harrison's term was over, and Grover Cleveland had come back in. And Grover Cleveland is anti-imperialist. Like, he, remember, he is incredibly stubborn, wh- about the things he believes. And he believes that building an empire is against everything America stands for, because we were once colonies that were part of somebody else's empire, and, you know, we, it was unjust for us to be, uh, doing to others what had been done to us. Um, and so, essentially, um, the people who started this revolution were now in a real pickle, because, um, Queen Lelou Kalani was able to get back control of the islands. And now she had these Americans imprisoned, and she was going to execute them for treason. They had, they had tried to take over the country and, and it failed. And this is where Cleveland steps in, and Cleveland says, look, if you will, if you will simply not execute these Americans, you, we will leave you alone, you, you, you can remain queen, um, and, and it's all good. But, but I'm asking you not to execute these Americans. And, uh, she refused. She's like, no, I'm queen. They, they tried to overthrow the government, they, they've committed treason, they must die. And, um, so, in order to save the lives of Lauren Thurston and the others who had kind of, you know, imposed the Bayonet Constitution on Hawaii, uh, President Cleveland steps in with American troops and says to, um, she, he basically overthrows Queen Lelou Kalani by force and says, okay, we are not going to annex Hawaii. We are going to give you your freedom. So you now are a free country as a democracy. We're gonna, we're gonna basically allow you to be a democracy. The Americans who live there can vote. The Hawaiian people who live there can vote, you can elect officials. Um, and so, um, Hawaii becomes a republic and an independent republic, um, but, uh, does not, um, uh, get taken by the, taken over by the, uh, by America, when all of the people in America who really, really want America to have an empire are just hopping mad, and they're jumping up and down, because they're so angry that Cleveland will not annex Hawaii. All right, and this is where President Cleveland almost gets us into a war with his stubbornness. Um, uh, and so, remember how I said that that quality was, was a wonderful quality when you're fighting corruption? Uh, and you're standing on principle and you're doing the right thing, but when it comes to foreign affairs, sometimes it's better to bend than to break, so to speak. So, um, there was a dispute going on in South America between the country of Venezuela and a British colony on the northern part of, um, uh, South America called British Guyana. It is the mother, modern-day country of Guyana. And essentially, um, their gold had been discovered in this disputed land, which is this area that's all kind of hash. You know, you can see it's all hashed. It's like half of what is now Guyana, basically, um, plus a little bit of what is now Venezuela. And, um, the British looked like they were gonna solve this problem by force, and they, you know, because they could. They, they were, they had the biggest navy in the world. They were considered the world's superpower at the time, in a lot of ways. And so, um, uh, you know, British warships were, were going into the Caribbean. And anybody, what is that a violation of? What, what, um, what doctrine had been proposed by an American president much earlier? Yes, Max?
Uh, the Monroe Doctrine?
Monroe Doctrine, yes. And so, um, essentially, this was a violation of the Monroe Doctrine, and President Cleveland steps in. He sti- he just sticks his nose into. President Cleveland steps in. He sti- he just sticks his nose into the middle of this dispute and he says, hold on, Britain. That's a violation of the Monroe Doctrine and America says, stay out of the Western Hemisphere with your warships. What's the problem with that? Anyone?
Um Britain has a bigger navy.
Yeah, uh Nick, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I was gonna say Britain is just still probably extremely strong nation. That's just gonna cause a lot of conflict that we really can't back up.
I mean, they overthrow a country later.
Right, yeah, I mean, there like, th- there's no way we're gonna win in a war against Britain. Like it, like it's, it's absolute insanity. Yes, we have a modernized navy, but it's not near as, near big enough to take on the British Navy. And so um Grover Cleveland, with his stubbornness and his, his kind of continuing stubbornness. And not being willing to back down, has put America in a very awkward position. Because there's no, there's no like um. Positive way out of this, essentially, because what are our two options? Anyone? Wha- what are the two options, both of which are bad? Ethan, go ahead.
Either one, try and fight off the British Navy, which is basically suicide.
Right.
Or two, let them take the territory.
Which makes us look bad in front of the world, kind of invalidates the Monroe Doctrine, humiliation, et cetera. So either way, we're screwed, essentially. And the crisis looks like it's about to come to a head. And then all of the sudden, Britain just decides, you know what? Actually, we're gonna arbitrate this dispute. We're not gonna solve it by force and America, we would like you to be the arbiter. And it was like. What happened? Um, does anybody know why Britain would do something like that? It has to do with European politics. Yes.
Probably because some other major thumb of power came to play in Europe and they don't wanna put their troops somewhere else.
Well, okay, and it's not like they're about ready to go to war, but there's, they see war coming down the pike. Uh um what? Major power has emerged um in Europe. Because it was unified in the eighteen seventies is and is now flexing its its uh its military might. And is is building a navy to rival um the British Navy.
Kaiser Wilhelm in Germany.
Germany, yeah, and 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 the Kaiser. So the the, yes, Boyer, what were you gonna say?
A little off topic, but was the ve- uh was at that time, like up until not very long ago, wasn't Venezuela like? Free market capitalists like we were, or were they still like under that like socialist?
The 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 socialist regime is much later. That's, that's Hugo Chavez. Um yeah, so. Um at the time, they are free market capitalist country, uh kind of, you know, uh a fragile, um you know. Situation because it sometimes was a democracy and sometimes it was a dictatorship and it was basically just, you know, another one of those. Countries that used to be a Spanish colony, but it was now an independent country, but had all kinds of internal struggles and whatnot. Um but yeah, no, they were, they were capitalist. Um the the sho- the socialist stuff doesn't happen until much, much later. Uh you know, I know, we know, we call it, you know. We we kind of think of of Venezuela as synonymous with socialism, but that's a, that's a relatively recent development historically speaking. Uh but yeah, Kaiser Wilhelm the second um is kind of this new impetuous young leader in in Germany. And he had fired the guy who had created Germany, the great chancellor of, you know, Otto von Bismarck. And he was taking Germany on a much more aggressive course than Bismarck had done. And as a result, Britain was thinking down the road. They were thinking future. Um, we're gonna need allies with manpower someday if it ever comes down to a conflict with Germany. And they were thinking that we might be. That ace in the hole, so to speak, that 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 country that could step in and tip the balance in their favor. Are they right? Was this a wise move on their part? Think about World War.
Going based on later events than kinda, yeah.
Oh yeah, World War One, we are the deciding difference. We we tip, like when it's uh, when it looks bad for the Allies. We tip the scales in their favor and World War Two, we end up saving Britain from from utter destruction. So it turns out to be a very, very smart move on their part. Um so. Uh they they called this padding the the eagle's head or something's policy in Britain. I can't remember exactly what the phrase was, but. Basically, if it hadn't been for that, the Venezuelan crisis would have been the Venezuelan humiliation, you know, either where our navy would have gotten destroyed. Or we would have had to just completely cave in. Um but it doesn't end up working out that way. Uh so Cleveland was able to be stubborn and get away with it, but boy, was that. Was that just kind of like the luck of the moment, so to speak, uh you know, because it really wasn't smart on his part to put us in that spot. Um alright, so during this time, um. Another colonial power is struggling with what is left of its empire. Um Spain had lost most of its empire as, when we discussed this in like the eighteen twenties, eighteen thirties. As, you know, um many of its uh colonies had revolted. After the home country of Spain had been taken over by Napoleon during the Napoleonic Wars. And um so basically you have this situation where um they don't have a lot of colonies left. But um they're trying really hard to hold on to what they have. And um but they haven't updated their, like they've lost a, like a lot of their sources of revenue, so they haven't updated their navy in a long time, but they have a lot of troops. And so um the, the, the area that becomes the area of focus is the island of Cuba. Which is like right on our doorstep. And um you know, Cuba had, we had been casting greedy eyes towards Cuba for a long time. American imperialists had wanted to get their hands on that island for a really long time. Um and we we were watching a civil war uh basically uh erupt there. As the Cuban peasants who had been working on uh sugar plantations, um which, you know, had been. The source of revenue, you know, cash crop wise for the Spain in that area ever since, you know. Uh they had, they had taken over most of the Caribbean and um. They basically uh um were fighting for their independence against the Spanish, you know, and they were just sick of being. Poor peasants, you know, on on these plantations. And um the Spanish kept on just sending in more and more troops. They had like. Two hundred thousand troops on the island of Cuba. And so they had hit kind of a balance um uh where the rebels. Would control the countryside because they knew the terrain really well and and they had the support of the people. And the Spanish had control of the cities. And so as the Spanish tried to go out into the countryside and get control of the countryside. Um they kept getting ambushed out in the countryside because the rebels were taking cover in villages. And you couldn't tell who was a villager and who was a rebel and stuff like that. And so the Spanish bring in a really ruthless general. Um someone who is uh well-versed in anti-insurgent tactics, um a guy by the name of General. Valerio Wyler and General Wyler comes up with a strategy. He's like, okay. The sit, the, the people in these villages are just going to have to um. They're just gonna have to basically put up with being stuck in in camps for a while. We're, we're just gonna round them all up and we're gonna put them in camps. We'll, we'll feed them, we'll, we'll, we'll supply food to the camps, but in the meantime. Anybody who doesn't go in a camp has to be a rebel. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna put all of the, the, the civilians in camps. Sweep through the countryside and try to kill every last rebel as a way of wiping out this insurgency. But the rebels are really good at attacking supply lines and so they keep attacking Spanish supply lines. And getting the food that was supposed to go to their troops and to um the camp. Oh, am I back? The, the food that was supposed to go to the troops in the camps, right? Faith, am I back?
Uh yeah, you, you were.
Okay, good. Alright, um and so um. There is a shortage of food and of course, who are they gonna feed first? Who are the Spanish gonna feed first? Their soldiers or the people in those camps?
Soldiers.
The soldiers are gonna get the food first because they've gotta, they've gotta, you know, continue this, this fight. And so the people in the camps are starving. And um pictures are smuggled out of people who are literally skin and bone. Um and um the Americans begin to, you know, agitate to get involved. Because now there's a reason for us to get involved, which isn't overtly imperialist. What is the reason that you could say America should get involved? Uh Ethan, go ahead.
Spain is treating their troops, like they're, they're basically ruining their civilians. They're starving their civilians. We gotta save them and also control them later for banana republics.
Uh yeah, Faith, what were you gonna say?
I was kinda gonna say the same thing. It's kind of a matter of, it's an ethical issue now. It's not just imperialist. And you can't just, the people who are imperialist are kinda like, hey, we can totally just take over. This is just an ethical thing now. It's not even because we wanna take over, which we can totally do that later, but right now.
It's human rights. It's, they're losing human rights. Look at the poor civilians, you know, et cetera. And so um this opportunity is kind of presenting itself and of course. The political advisors to the president are saying, look, sir, like domestically, you are in a pickle politically. Like everybody's really angry and they seem to be angry at you. This could be a way to distract everybody and kind of unite the country behind you. You know, this would be a really good idea. What do you think um uh Cleveland's response is gonna be? Go ahead.
No, no, probably gonna be stubborn as ever.
Goes against the principles that I believe in. I believe that America should never own colonies, et cetera, and I know what you people are trying to do. So yes, um and so uh this is the first kind of war. Between a politician and the media, which again has, is an information war. Uh and it has some amazing parallels to the present day. What recent politician basically ended up in a, in an information war? With the media.
Start, last name starts with a T.
Yes, yes, Donald Trump. Okay, so um uh basically, we have um some newspaper. Chains that had been developed, uh which were, you know, just in the same kind of monopolistic tendencies. That other industries had kind of fallen into. There were these, these massive um. Media empires that had been built. Um and the two guys who had basically competing media empires and who were basically trying to. Knock each other out of business and and get complete and total control of all media were. Joseph Pulitzer, okay, which of course we all know his name from the Pulitzer Prizes. And William Randolph Hearst, okay? And so these two newspaper magnates are are trying to um outdo each other. And back at this time, um. Journalistic standards aren't quite what they, you know, what they once were. Where, you know, you have journalists basically exaggerating things, making things up, you know, et cetera. And so um and of course, tr- to get people to buy their newspapers. Um they're trying to add on cool little things that you can't find. In the other guy's newspaper. So um, you know, of course, political cartoons are are something that people, you know. Immediately look at and cartoons in general, but um the first color ink that was used in um. In newspapers was used uh to create these colored uh comics. Uh where you have this, this kid who has a raincoat, uh and it's a yellow raincoat. They call him the Yellow Kid. Uh and he goes on these adventures and stuff, but it's like the first splash of color inside of a newspaper. And so um but that happens to coincide with the, the standards of journalism kind of taking a nosedive. As the, the um, the two chains keep trying to out-sensationalize each other, you know, like we have. Um, we have printed newspapers nowadays that have gone completely over the cliff in this way. Um wh- what are, what are the newspapers nowadays that will take some small grain of truth? And just run an absolutely over-the-top headline that is like super exaggerated um. Uh anyone? Uh you can buy them in the grocery store um oftentimes. You can just give me a name. Yes, Max.
Uh tabloids?
Yeah, the tabloids, you know, like the Globe, the Inqui- the National Enquirer, you know, they run like ridiculously over the top. Just to get you to buy it, you know, like, you know, I, I can't even think of a headline, you know, off the top of my head. That's, you know, one of their over-the-top ridiculous headlines, but it's like, you know. Um but it, but, but that's the kind of stuff they do and there'd be like some small grain of truth. Yeah, Nick, what were you gonna say?
So this was just clickbait, like um old clickbait, basically.
Essentially, yeah, yeah. And so um their big thing, they knew that people really like wanted to hear. Was that America was gonna get involved over in Cuba. And so they're trying to put pressure on Cleveland. By amping up uh public opinion in favor of going to war. So um. Basically, you've got this, this, this war between the uh, the newspapers where they're both. Like sensationalizing the whole Cuba story and, you know, notice some of the um uh. Like here's a, a cartoon, Wyler the Butcher, you know, uh uh and then crisis at hand, Spanish treachery, you know. Um uh the Cuban mother, you know, oh, you know, she's starving, they're skin and bone. And so they're just trying to amp up public pressure on uh Cleveland, thinking, you know, he'll cave. Cause he wants to get reelected, you know, this is his only way out politically, you know, it's his only, and but Cleveland was just. Stubborn as the day was long and just was just staunchly anti-imperialist and would not cave to the pressure.
You know, I'm starting to see some similarities between Cleveland and Trump, mainly in how they're both so stubborn in their weird ways.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and and.
Even if to save their political career, they say, nope.
Nope, nope, just not gonna do it. Yeah, so um, yeah, it, it is interesting, some of the parallels you get to see too today. But um the, yeah, the, the, the two newspaper chains just kind of uh. Throw caution to the wind and 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 print stories that are like overly sensationalized. And so that, we call this yellow journalism because of the, the color that was put in the newspaper there. And so um uh this is something that uh has, you know, sometimes people will bring it up even today, you know, like if they're trying to say, oh, fake news. Or something and they'll say, yellow journalism, you know, sensationalism or whatever, but um uh. Cleveland is unmoved, okay, in spite of the, the really strong. Public pressure that is mounting uh to, to, for the America to do something, to get involved, you know, even if it's not for. Imperialist reasons, just for s- sheer humanitarian reasons, uh you know, the suffering of these poor people. Uh is, is just, you know, over the top, but of course, a lot of this is just being amped up by the yellow press. Um alright, little interlude uh with uh one of the states out west, um Utah. Uh had long had um a, a, a large enough population to enter the country. But had been denied entry by Congress. Uh why is that? Does anybody wanna guess? Like what was the um? Wh- what do you think the reason was that uh uh, yes, Ethan?
Well, specifically, I can see that it was created in eighteen fifty-one. Um this was before the Civil War and they really didn't wanna change up the whole slave versus, you know.
That's a good.
Free slave argument.
It's a good insight, yeah. Um Faith, what were you gonna add?
Wasn't it because of the Mormons? Like they didn't like a polyamorous.
The polygamy.
Polygamy, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so they, they saw polygamy as an, as an attack on a fundamental institution in American social life. Uh and just, just could not countenance it. So like Utah had remained a territory. As a matter of fact, federal troops had gone out in eighteen fifty-seven and had confronted um the Mormon leadership out there. In uh what looked like was going to become an armed conflict um. And uh they had demanded that Brigham Young, the guy who had led them out there and who had kind of established them out in the Great Basin area. That he stepped down as governor and so Brigham Young did in order to avoid, you know, outright armed conflict with the feds. Of course, at that time, the federal government was trying to distract from the growing, you know, fear over slavery and and whatnot. In the sectionalism that would lead to the Civil War. Um uh but um, you know, the, the Mormons remained very suspicious of um anybody coming out their way. Cause they thought, you know, they were going to get attacked at any time. And so this led to a terrible tragedy where a caravan of of settlers that was was passing through their area. Uh, was attacked by the Mormons um who thought, you know, this was a precursor to the federal government coming in and and, you know, like. Shutting down their church or whatever, um, in what was known as the Mountain Meadows massacre, where a hundred and twenty men, women and children were all executed. Um, uh, uh, so. Uh, basically, uh, federal forces, um, uh, you know, uh, did arrive and and. Uh, they kind of held a Mormon militia held off federal troops at a at at the the um. The kind of the entrance to the Salt Lake Valley, uh, but um Brigham Young did agree to step down in eighteen fifty-eight. So I kinda jumped ahead in the story, but that that was where he basically decided to step down. And um. Uh, so the Mormon church realized that they were never going to become part of the United States until. They banned polygamy. Polygamy was the the sticking point. So the Mormon church decided to kind of have a new revelation where. It was no longer allowable for a man to have more than one wife and that they have their new official position was that marriage. Was between one man and one woman, and that was it, monogamy rather than polygamy. And when they make that change um and apply for statehood yet again. Um, Congress approves their entrance into the Union. And they become our forty-fifth state in January of eighteen ninety-six. All right, um. You knew that this was gonna probably happen in the middle of a financial panic. As companies were trying to survive and they were trying to um, you know. Cut costs, one of their biggest costs, of course, being paying their workers. Um, labor unions uh were starting to, you know, really. Get, you know, very, very uh angsty about the whole, you know, loop. P wages being cut, et cetera, and were willing to go as far as a strike again, even though every time. A major strike had happened, it had backfired on on um the uh unions and had caused them to, you know. Lose uh a lot of support. So um, there's a special situation in a town called Pullman, Illinois. Pullman, Illinois is what you call a company town. Um, there was a guy who had basically kind of uh cornered the market on a special kind of train car called the Pullman. Uh, Palace uh car. It was like a, it was like a car where it had like beds in it that had special springs. Where even if the train was going over kind of bumpy territory, it would, the springs would allow you to have a nice. Smooth ride and you could sleep and everything. And it was kind of considered to be the luxury cars on on trains. And of course, the Panic of eighteen ninety-three meant that many railroads were no not. Buying Pullman Palace cars at this point because their their finances were so, you know, strained. And so um. Uh, the company had to announce wage cuts. And so they basically said, okay, we're cutting wages, you know, significantly. And the workers were like, okay, but since this is a company town and you own all the buildings in the town and we pay you rent. And you own all the stores and we pay for products from your stores and you're making money off of all of it. You're gonna lower our rents too, right? Because we can't afford to live if we don't have rent lowered. And of course, Pullman said no. And so uh the the workers went on strike and um the leader. Of the American Railway Union, a guy who we are gonna talk about a number of times, uh Eugene Debs. Uh, a committed socialist and and kind of um, you know, labor leader. Comes in to lead this strike and the strike spreads like wildfire across the country. It's just like the Great Railroad Strike of eighteen seventy-seven. Except things aren't on fire yet, but um the it spreads all across the country and railroad workers all across the country. Just suddenly go on strike in support of the Pullman um uh strikers. And this becomes a big nationwide strike called the Pullman Strike. And. President Cleveland is now stuck in that same position that President Hayes had been in and other presidents where. They want him to send in federal troops, the business owners do. But he had always been a man on the side of the people. So they knew that if they were gonna get Cleveland to send in troops. They couldn't just be like, it can't be like the old politics of like, hey, you know, hey, we could help you out, you know, your campaign's gonna get all this money and donations, et cetera. They couldn't do that with him. He's 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 a man of principle. He's stubborn as the day is long, but they're like. Sir, it says right here in the Constitution that the president shall. Uh, make sure that the mails are delivered. Like, that's your responsibility. It's in the list of things that you are supposed to do under the Constitution. And because of this strike, mail is not being delivered. The US Post Office is unable to deliver the mail because of this strike. So it is your duty, sir. You must break this strike in order to execute your duties as president. And so in a very clever kind of way, they are able to get Cleveland, who has never been the friend of big business. And has never been, you know, on the side of the companies and and corrupt or anything like that. They're able to get him to actually send in twelve thousand federal troops to break the strike. Now, remember, we're in the middle of the Panic of eighteen ninety-three. Coxey's army has been disbanded by the feds. And um, oh, and by the way, um, they go to a court and they get a injunction uh from the court. Uh, so this this is supposed to give, you know, President Cleveland cover um under the Sherman Antitrust Act, you know, this is a. The this strike is a conspiracy uh in restraint of trade. So this is one of the instances where that law is used against um the strikers. Yes, Olivia.
So would you say this was a successful strike or unsuccessful? Because when I'm looking at it, there's good things that came out of it. And then there's also like. Bad things that came out of it. So I just wanna know if it was, yeah.
That is an excellent question. Um, and and honestly, um, here's here's the answer. Uh, it is unsuccessful, uh, because what ends up happening is um the troops come in. They break the strike and they force um the the strikers to basically um. Get out of the rail yards and then, you know, the company is like, anybody want a job? And and of course, there's like, you know, fifty million people are like, me, me, me. And so um, you know, they're able to fire all the strikers. And they're able to go a- and get the railroads opening, open again. But this is. Political suicide for Cleveland. Cleveland, who had once been the hero of the people. The guy who, you know, was stand up to corruption, the guy who was in there and did an honest job for the little guy. Because he had kind of been buffaloed into real, you know, thinking I have to protect the mail as it goes out, you know. And they're like, look, he made a deal with JP Morgan, you know, the 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 the. Arch enemy of the of the of the little guy, the people, you know, and and so Cleveland, um. You know, when he sends in the troops, seals his political fate, you know, what the guy who had once been, you know, the hero of the little people. Is now a political dead man. Um, and so uh uh, the strike is broken. Uh, the strikers, many of them lose their jobs. Eugene Debs ends up in jail. Um, and uh Cleveland is a political dead duck. So big business gets everything they want. They they get not only it, not only do they get, you know, the strike broken, but they they also. Basically get rid of Cleveland, you know, they know that he'll never be able to run again uh and win. So it's it's just like a double win for them. Uh, and so. We need to kind of do a little bit of an overview of of the um of the war that is going on um. In America between big business and labor, uh, because um. Each side kind of had weapons that they were now employing. And these are things that you actually do need to know. Sometimes you will see them in multiple choice questions on the AP. So um there you you have to know the definitions of these words that you see underlined here. So um. Unions like the American Federation for Labor um preferred something called the Closed Shop. Which meant that if you got a job at a company, that um you had to join the union. It was like a condition of employment. And so in those various trade unions, they were able to basically make it where everybody who worked for a company. That did plumbing or carpentry or whatever it was, um, they all were members of the union. Um, but uh businesses, of course, preferred what is known as the Open Shop. Where it being a part of the union was not a condition of employment, but they went further and they basically um. Uh, used lockouts where they would shut down their own factories to break the union. Like, so it's kind of like the reverse of a strike. They'd be like, okay, we got factories in other places in the country that uh we can just, you know. Um, we can cut wages and do things, you know, because we don't, there there aren't unions in these other factories where, you know, people are. But this one factory has a union in it, so we're gonna lock out everybody. And basically, until the union is dissolved and until people like all like, you know, say, okay, I'm not in the union anymore. Um, eh, that you can't work, like they would just say the 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 factory is shut. We're not working. So it's kind of the reverse of a strike is and you could only do it if you were big enough that you could make up for the lost revenue in other places. Um, but um they also used what was known as a yellow dog contract when employees. Uh, would sign their employment contracts, uh, they, there would be a provision in there that says that. As a as a condition of signing this contract, you can never join a union. Um, and so that was a weapon they used to try to keep unions from forming. And um, you know, it it it. The war between business and labor really had gotten to just kind of this epic level in American uh history. And a lot of big business owners realized that people hated them and just saw them as as these ultimate, you know, arch villains. And so some of the business owners tried to reform and and uh, you know, um. Better their image uh through something called the National Civic Federation, where they practiced what is known as welfare capitalism. Welfare capitalism is where they basically tried to provide some welfare services for uh people who are poor. And of course, we've already talked about one of the um, one of the places that they donated money to. Does anybody remember what um what progressive uh movement um kind of institution? Were they donating to? Uh, yes, go ahead.
The whole house?
Yeah, the the settlement houses in the various, you know, big cities, the they would, and of course, they would advertise that they had donated, you know. X amount of dollars to this settlement house as a way to rehabilitate their image through through welfare capitalism. So. Yes, they would give back to the workers, but only in the way they wanted to. Yes, Nick, go ahead.
Was this kind of like the beginning of like benefits for workers or does that come later?
That'll come later as as labor unions won't get enough of an upper hand to really negotiate things like really nice benefits. Until the nineteen thirties, when the federal government is going to pass laws like the Wagner Act, which are going to give. The workers the the right to collective bargaining, you know, and things like that, where they can, they can just use almost. The power of the federal government to force businesses to the table and force them to negotiate things like. You know, nice benefits. So we'll be getting to that, though, when we get to the uh into to the nineteen thirties. So that is kind of where the battle lines are 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 at between labor and big business and the weapons that each side is using against the other. Um, business kind of, you know, the business world goes through these little fads, like where. And it still happens today where like if you're in management, there'll be some kind of new thing that all managers are into. And they'll be just like all so so wrapped up in it, you know, like some person will give a TED Talk on something and everybody be like. Oh, that is the greatest idea ever. We're gonna do it in our company. And so it becomes like a big fad in the business world. Well. One of the big fads in the business world that actually becomes like so notable that we talk about it in in history class is um scientific management. And that is where a guy by the name of Frederick Winslow Taylor, who was a mechanical engineer, became convinced. That the reason that companies uh were, you know, having such a terrible time and have their bottom line, you know, and their profit margin was so. You know, it wasn't that great was because of waste and mismanagement. And so he said, look. There there is a scientific best way to do a certain process, whether it be building, you know. A typewriter or building, you know, or or sewing together shirts or whatever. There is a most efficient way to do it based on science. And so he says. That process needs to be the one that a company settles on to cut out all the waste. And then they need to train all their managers and all their workers on that process. And that will make it so the company is like really efficient, as efficient as possible, as as efficient as science could make it. And that workers, um, you're getting the maximum amount out of every worker. Uh, and in a in a time when companies were looking for ways to save money. Uh, you know, because of the Panic of eighteen ninety-three, this became a big deal because they're like, okay. I don't have to, you know, just announce wage cuts and things that are gonna cause strikes. I can, I can basically just cut out all the waste. I can, I can, you know, so uh Taylor became like a big deal and um. Uh, you know, I have the tailor, the the principles of tailorism like listed here on the slide. Um, you know, performance of task should be according to procedures that are based off of academic or scientific, you know, studies. All employees should be trained on the scientific procedures. All employees should be supervised and be given detailed instructions. Uh, and managers should have worked according to these scientific principles as well. So this like took the country by storm and co- and companies. Tried to basically keep themselves afloat and 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 manage not to be um. Uh, you know, another victim of the Panic of eighteen ninety-three by employing the the principles of scientific management. All right. A lawsuit is brought by the Cleveland administration um against one of the big trusts. This is Cleveland trying to fulfill his, you know. Promise to the American laborer that he is gonna be their champion. And of course, this is something that he must do now because of the impact. Of uh the Pullman Strike on his popularity. And so the Sugar Trust was um also known as the American. Um, Sugar Company because it had acquired uh the EC Knight Sugar Company in eighteen ninety-two, giving it ninety-eight percent. Market share control. And uh President Cleveland had ordered the government to sue under the Sherman Antitrust Act to break up. Uh, this this trust. And so this was gonna be the first major test in the courts of whether the Sherman Antitrust Act. Could be used to break up um a uh a trust. And in an eight-one decision with uh Chief Justice Melvin Fuller, again, writing for the majority. Uh, and John Marshall Harland being the only dissenting voice, uh, again, you know, something that we see as a pattern here in many of these cases. Um, uh, they said that the Sherman Antitrust Act does not apply to the manufacturing process. So that is where you're talking about vertical integration, where one company is going to own all the steps in the process. And they said that the Antitrust Act doesn't apply to owning all of the steps in the process. And again, the legal reasoning is kind of tortured. Um, uh, but that really eviscerates the Sherman Antitrust Act as a. Effective weapon against the trusts. Uh, and so um this is seen as another victory for big business. And another loss for the little guy. Um, another court case uh that becomes a very important court case having to do with Jim Crow laws in the South is. Um, Plessy V Ferguson in eighteen ninety-six. And essentially what had happened was. Um, the NAACP, which had basically been bankrolling some lawyers, had decided that they were going to. Challenge the segregation laws in the South. And try to get a federal Supreme Court decision that would uh essentially invalidate all of those laws. All across.
Doctor Johnson, you cut out.
Oh, um, they they were gonna try and get a Supreme Court decision that would invalidate all of those laws. Uh, and and basically make it so there would be um, you know, a federal, kind of using the supremacy clause in this, in the six. Article six of the Constitution to just wipe out all segregation laws in the states across the country. So they had been setting this up very carefully. And what they did was they had a man who was only one-eighth black, but that's still. Qualified him as black according to Southern laws. And, you know, therefore he had to ride in the colored car. And you know, therefore he had to ride in the colored car. Um, they had him ride in a white car. Now, he was so um, light skinned that you couldn't really tell that he was black. He looked like a white man. His name was Homer Plessy. And Homer Plessy uh, basically rode in a train in the South in the white car, um, and then told the conductor that he was one-eighth black. And uh, of course, under state law, he had to be arrested. And so he was. And uh, this was the plan. They basically took this case up through the state courts and appealed it to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court took up the case and they were like, okay, yes, this is going to be it. And in a seven-one decision with Hen- with Justice Henry Billings Brown, writing for the majority. The Supreme Court said that it's okay to segregate people as long as the facilities are equal. So essentially what was supposed to be a victory for the NAACP uh, and for um, you know, civil rights ended up being one of the worst defeats they had ever suffered because um, the, the Supreme Court was essentially saying, as long as it's separate. I mean, is, is, it can be separate as long as it's equal, separate but equal. Yes, Boyer, what were you gonna say?
They say, or they said it was equal, but like, did anybody ever enforce that actually? Like, it was pretty garbage.
Right, exactly. And so like, you know, when, when you would apply this to something like schools, you know, there, they could set, they could still segregate schools. You know, there'd be a black school and there'd be a white school. And of course, the white school is gonna get the better teachers and the better textbooks and the buses and all of that. And, and the black school is going to. So Southerners, white Southerners would pay lip service to the separate but equal doctrine, which basically is where the federal government is saying segregation is okay. We approve. Um, but in, in actual practice, it was never equal. So yes, Boyer, I was just about to, to get to that actually. So excellent question. So this, of course, has gone down in the history of the Supreme Court as one of the worst decisions they've ever made. Um, it's up there with Dred Scott as, as just a terrible decision. Um, and of course, it's going to get reversed uh, during the Civil Rights Movement in another landmark Supreme Court case, having to do with education. By the way, so um, of course, the only dissenting voice was, once again, Justice John Marshall Harlan, who wrote a blistering dissent where he said that the Constitution was colorblind. And uh, that this case would go down in the history books as one of the worst decisions ever made by the courts. And he, of course, was one hundred percent right about that. So um, that is Plessy V Ferguson, eighteen ninety-six, which uh, kind of makes, gives the federal stamp of approval to segregation laws in the South. Another really important um, person uh, that kind of, it makes an impact at this time is a, an American philosopher, an educational reformer named John Dewey. Um, and John Dewey basically uh, uh, is one of the leaders of a school of uh, thought and philosophy known as pragmatism. Uh, and pragmatism is all about like the highest good for the greatest number of people. Okay, so that's where you should draw the line, where, you know, between when you're making decisions and um, he basically said, yeah, democracy has its flaws. Democracy is not perfect, but it is the highest ethical good for the greatest number of people. So therefore it is the best system. And he took that democratic kind of that pro-democratic philosophy of his and he applied it to education. And he basically, um, in, this is what we call the reflex arc. Yes. Uh, and he basically says, okay, um, looking at the student teacher relationship and the qualities of great teachers. Um, what, i- i- and, and of course, he had his own laboratory schools, the University of Chicago Laboratory School, which was a famous, you know, place where educational ideas were actually tested in an actual classroom where, where students were being taught. Um, and he basically uh, you know, developed these, these theories of education where he said, you know, um, the, what students want and what's best for students needs to be um, a part of what teachers do. And so it's like, instead of teaching being like a dictatorship where the teacher just is like, this is the way it is, you know. Uh, students should have input uh, into how things are taught and, and whatnot. Is someone trying to say something? Cause uh, I thought I heard a voice, but maybe not. Um, but this has a huge impact on teacher training programs uh, and, and Dewey's ideas are still discussed. I remember taking college classes on education and um, diving into, you know, John Dewey's theories. Um, but he really, really uh, becomes a big proponent of experience in education. He's like, you know, it's no good just to like, open up a textbook and to just study these things. You have to go out and experience them and learn by experience in kind of as much of a real world simulation as you possibly can. Uh, so of course, this is one of the reasons why I love to discuss current events because we can kind of do um, a little bit of experimenting in terms of like, how do these ideas really apply in the real world by talking about the news and how they do apply? Um, so Olivia, yes, what was your question?
Um, I could have interpreted this wrong, but are you saying this is when hands-on learning was invented or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh, so this is, this is very much where hands-on learning becomes a thing. And, and John Dewey is the one who, who really pushes that, you know, projects, things where people have to make something where you have to take those ideas that are in the textbook and actually apply them and use them yourself. Uh, Elizabeth, go ahead. I'm, I, I'm, I don't know, maybe Kenzie was first. I don't know who was first, but.
Elizabeth can go first. It's okay.
Okay, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Um, so was this also kind of where like different learning styles and things like that, you know, where some people auditory learners, was that kind of part of this as well?
That's gonna be a guy um, in the eighties named Howard Gardner uh, with his multiple intelligences and learning style. So that's, that's a, that's a later uh, kind of educational, like education kind of goes through what the business world goes through. There'll be like a fad and everybody will be like, oh my gosh, this is the great idea we've been missing all this time. Everybody do this, you know. Uh, so multiple intelligences and learning styles will be a little later on. That'll be Howard Gardner uh, in the nineteen eighties. But excellent question. And then uh, Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
So, did they, um, when they were training the teachers, did they ask the students what they wanted? Or did they just tell the teachers to ask them what they wanted? Like, was it firsthand or secondhand?
Yeah, it's like, like, how far do you let it go? Because obviously if you're just like, hey, kids, what do you want? Everybody would be like, uh, no homework, um, and uh, I want an A, yeah, right now. Uh, and so basically you have to, you know, you have to balance it out, obviously, but um, uh, th- there is a book that John Dewey writes called Democracy in Education where he says, teachers need to seek feedback from their students. Ask them, hey, is this working? Is this method I'm using? Is it reaching you? Like, what could I do to improve? Um, and, and get feedback from students on, on how to better do the job they're supposed to do, of course. Um, you know, and some power sharing is encouraged where students take responsibility, but you know, still trying to uphold those standards, you know, but getting students to intrinsically see why that's important. Like, why is it important that you learn how to argue a thesis, you know? Um, that kind of thing. So putting some of the power in the hands of students and then saying, look, here's the goal. You know, how do you think we should get there? Uh, don't abuse your power just to be lazy, such sort of thing. So um, Faith, what were you gonna say?
This style of classroom kind of promotes the whole like, I guess, open discussion kind of thing where this the teacher might ask a question and then the students can like carry on back and forth between themselves with the teacher kind of supervising.
Yes, exactly. And, and that's another part of it. That is another part of it. And uh, again, it's what we call Socratic dialogue where um, Socrates used to teach his students, uh, you know, according to the, the, the dial, the Plato's writings where he has these dialogues where you know, the que- the, the teacher will ask a question and try to get a dis- a debate or a discussion going and, and let students kind of instead of just the teacher just being like, this is what it is. Let students try to like, you know, figure it out. Like, let them try to hash it out in a debate and, and of course, that makes it much more interesting.
So it's against the, just the lecture kind of thing?
So.
You just sit down and just listen to someone talk for two minutes?
And again, there's the, there's, you have to strike the balance because if you, if you debated every topic, you would, you wouldn't get through any of the material. So like, you have to kind of pick and choose where you, where you, you know, open it up to debates. But yes, uh, uh, it's, it's one of those things that really makes education much more interesting and, and where students aren't just being passive, they're getting involved. So excellent, excellent insight. Um, and Brayden, yes, go ahead.
Uh, so, I, you know, you, you've kind of been mentioning it a little bit, but I, I wanted to ask like, what exactly do the classrooms look like before this? Like the lessons and stuff? Are they literally just like sitting at desks and listening to teachers drone on and on for hours?
Open your textbook to page such and such and student, and then they just write on the, on the cla- uh, on the and a lot of teachers were kind of old school, you know, they just, they had like a set curriculum in their head and they would just run through it. And every, all the students were just expected to just, you know, deal, you know, and just, you know, that, so this is like new methodology. This is something, and you know, John Dewey studied teachers that, that students loved and, and were like, you know, what is this teacher doing that is making them such a great teacher? And then this is where he discovers, you know, all of these methods and then kind of scientifically kind of puts it all together into a theory of, of a better theory of how to educate uh, students. So yes, but it was very di- it was, it was like a dictatorship and it was very, you know, kind of. And even up through, you know, the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, you're gonna see that continue to be a, a very dominant form of teaching in classrooms. It's not until the nineteen seventies where the ideas of Dewey really start to be practiced in a large way in, in classrooms as schools really start to kind of experiment and, and go in different directions. Yes, Elizabeth.
Um, so the University of Chicago Laboratory School, how did that work? Did he just like, was that just like a classroom and he brought different teachers in and studied them? I guess that seems kind of strange to me.
Well, professors would teach classes to students um, like as, like, like in grade school. And um, parents basically could, uh, they had the option in that particular neighborhood to um, enroll their student in the laboratory school rather than in a regular school. And a lot of students or a lot of teachers who, I'm sorry, parents who are more progressive and who wanted their students exposed to these new ideas, they would, they would enroll their students in, in like these laboratory schools. Um, and of course, those have become a thing all over the country. Um, uh, University School of Nashville, I believe, started out as a laboratory school. Maybe I'm wrong. US and it's, it's a private school up in Nashville. Um, but I know that li- like universities all across the country began doing this as um, professors in education began to kind of follow Dewey's lead. And, and really experiment with what, how, how does this process best work? Like, like what is the best way to educate? And so um, you really cannot understate how important John Dewey is um, to the world of education. He really is like the foundation of all of the kind of innovations that have made um, learning more interactive, uh, which is really kind of like the heart of what he's all about. All right, so. Um, we do need to talk about a guy who ends up writing um, a uh, a book, which really is, it becomes a, a big deal. Um, his name is William Hope Harvey. Um, and he was a lawyer and a resort founder, uh, and a politician who basically made it his life's mission to fight for free silver or bimetallism. When of course, we've already talked about this where um, you know, the dollar would be back, not just by gold, but by gold and silver. And so he wrote a popular pamphlet, sorry, not a book pamphlet, um, called Coins Financial School, which popularized the issue. Um, and this, of course, is going to basically make it a fertile issue for the eight, the upcoming eighteen ninety-six election where, you know, you're, you're, you're coming up on an election in a year where there's a lot of political angst because people are suffering because of the panic of eighteen ninety-three, which the country is like in the full grip of only three years in. And basically, um, it kind of takes the form of a series of lectures by fictional character named Coin, who goes through the history of the United States in six days. And finding, and, and basically goes through all the financial panics that we've talked about, you know, panic of eighteen nineteen, panic of eighteen thirty-seven, panic of eighteen fifty-three. And blames all of it on central bankers and their insistence on the gold standard. So of course, that is a, that is a massive distortion of history, but this is going to make bimetallism a huge political issue because people are looking for some sort of relief. Like pe- even people who still have jobs that are barely holding on, they're looking for some sort of relief. And they become convinced because of this pamphlet that that relief is silver back in the dollar, which would make the dollar worth a little less and make it so people could pay off their debts a little easier. So um, the, it is hard to understate how important this becomes uh, in terms of what will become uh, important in this next election. And of course, um, we have one heck of an interesting situation that develops in eighteen ninety-six. Okay, so Grover Cleveland is a political dead man, like his own party abandons him. They know that he'll never win another election after the Pullman strike and, you know, s- his decision to save the dollar with the help of JP Morgan and getting rid of Coxey's army and all of that, you know, it's he may have done what was best for the country, but he destroyed himself politically in the process. Uh, and so a, a lawyer who's just kind of this enterprising young, you know, energetic guy by the name of William Jennings Bryan, um, takes the Democratic Party by storm by basically uh, saying that uh, you know, that, that really free silver is the answer. So in eighteen ninety-two, the populists had voted third party. Bryan captures the populism of the, of the eighteen nineties and, and basically kind of he captures their imagination, you know, you know, and again, we can compare it to Donald Trump uh, capturing the populist imagination in the two thousands. There's sometimes there is just a person with that charisma, with that, that kind of innate um, sense of, of how the common man thinks and just what to say to really get the common man to just absolutely fall in love with them. And so um, he just began barnstorming across the country, making speeches. And he had this speech uh, called the Cross of Gold Speech, um, where he like gets so poetic and so allegorical that he basically compares um, the big business interests trying to um, uh, you know, put the, the country on the dollar on the gold standard to the crucifixion of Jesus Christ. And it's like, he, he says, we will answer their demand for a gold standard by saying to them, you shall not press down upon the brow of labor this crown of thorns. You shall not crucify mankind upon a cross of gold. And it was just like, people had their minds just blown. Like, it was just like, this guy is amazing. And so um, he had basically taken that, that massive wave of populism and had absorbed it into the Democratic Party. And the big business interests were looking at him and going, oh my gosh, this guy is going to wreck everything. He's, they were so scared of, of William Jennings Bryan. They did not know what to do. And that, of course, opens the door for another enterprising political um, genius, so to speak. A guy who comes in and says, yeah, um, I have a plan. Uh, and I own a US Senator uh, who would be a perfect, a, a perfect tool for big business and will do whatever you say. But I, I, I need a war chest. I need money. His name is Mark Hannah. And Mark Hannah, this guy right here, um, basically uh, convinced businesses that he could win and paint Bryan as a wild-eyed socialist radical. If he had enough money to establish this like giant advertising campaign across the, the, the country. And so big businesses were like, you know, after, you know, talking to him and hearing his presentation became convinced that he could do it. And they're like, here, here's a ton of money. And so um, the biggest advertising war chest, political war chest that had ever been assembled in American history up to this point was assembled in um, the run-up to the election of eighteen ninety- up to this point was assembled in, um, the run-up to the election of eighteen ninety-six, seven million dollars. Which, I mean, in the value, when the value of the dollar was as high as it was back then, is just an astronomical amount of money. Uh, seven million dollar war chest, um, versus the populist, ma- you know, the guy who had captured populism and just was like the populist king. Okay, so it is, populist, s- king, speech maker, amazing politician versus, advertising campaign, so to speak. Um, and by the way, the guy who, um, Mark Hannah controlled was a Senator, uh, from Ohio named William McKinley, who had gotten himself into a big financial pickle, and was going to go bankrupt personally. And Mark Hannah had seen an opportunity because he, he's like, this guy has no principles. He like literally will do whatever, you know, you ask him to it, cause he just doesn't really have anything that he cares about. Um, and so he had basically stepped in and saved McKinley from financial ruin. And from that point forward, he, McKinley would really just do whatever, you know, Hannah wanted. Um, and so he's like, this guy is perfect for big business. And so it's, it's war chest, um, advertising war chest, you know, puppet president versus, you know, this, this really in insanely good speech maker who had captured the, the populist heartbeat of the country. Um, and this is going to be one epic political battle. And so in the campaign of eighteen ninety-six, um, William Jennings Bryan, uh, took the party away from Cleveland, uh, at the convention. He got the nomination, and just railed against the gold standard. And, and you know, he's, he's, he's tapping into the angst of, you know, that people are feeling from the panic of eighteen ninety-three. He's tapping into, kind of the sense that everybody had because of, you know, um, that pamphlet we were just talking about. Um, you know, that it was really the central bankers and the gold standard that was to blame. And he was making that cross of gold speech in town after town, city after city, all across the country. And, um, the Republicans end up going with Mark Hannah's little, uh, puppet, uh, Senator William McKinley of Ohio, who they run a front porch campaign. Remember, a front porch campaign is where, the candidate doesn't really go out and do a lot of interacting with the public. It's the candidate just kind of stays home on his front porch, and lets people talk about him. And of course, the advertising is very clever. They're like, uh, basically saying, William Jennings Bryan is a socialist. He's gonna destroy the whole capitalist system, the system where, you know, you could be the next millionaire if you just worked hard enough. Um, and, uh, you know, they're like, William McKinley is, is a reformer too. He, he, he cares about, you know, getting rid of corruption, but he's not insane. He's not like William Jennings Bryan. William Jennings Bryan is insane. He's a socialist. Um, and so, uh, you know, they, they kept, um, spreading rumors that certain companies were gonna go out of business, if McKinley won, you know, and workers were like scared, you know, they're like, maybe I should vote for, um, uh, I'm sorry, if, if Brian, uh, won the election and they're like, maybe I should vote for McKinley instead, you know, this is, you know. And so, um, and of course, they focused on the big cities, um, and, and where the population centers were. So, uh, anybody, who's gonna win? The, the best advertising campaign in American political history, or one of the greatest populist candidates in American political history? Ethan?
It's always the money.
Okay, Nick, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say, I've like heard the name McKinley before, but I've never heard of, uh, uh, Mr. Jennings Bryan, so I'm gonna assume it's Ken.
You're gonna go with McKinley as well? Okay. Any other, any other thoughts on this? Because again, there are some parallels to, to recent modern politics. Uh, you know, people say that Donald T- Trump did manage to tap into that populist angst, uh, that people were feeling. Well, anyway, this is, oh, I'm sorry, we have one, we have a, a third party I have to, uh, uh, talk about real quick. So there are some people within the Democratic Party who do want a dollar backed by gold. Um, and so they became known as the Gold Bug Democrats and they broke away from the rest of the Democratic Party. Um, and, uh, basically held a separate convention and named, uh, their party, the National Democratic Party, uh, and they nominated John Palmer, um, as, uh, their candidate. He was a former union general. Yes, Nathan.
I feel like we see a lot of third parties in the, this time period. How come we don't have as many like today?
We do actually, um, it's just that they don't get a lot of press. We have the Libertarian Party, which always runs a candidate. We have the Green Party, which always runs a candidate. And actually, sometimes they have been spoilers. Um, there was a guy in the nineteen nineties, uh, when Clinton, you know, was, was running for president, uh, in winning, uh, who, uh, basically created his own little third party and took a ton of votes away from the Republicans, uh, Ross Perot. Um, so there are lots of little third parties. As a matter of fact, when you are eighteen and you, 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 get the right to vote and you go and you look at your ballot, you'll see the two main parties at the top, but then you'll see a whole slew of little third parties underneath on the ballot. So, yeah, they're still around. It's just that they don't get a lot of press unless they, unless they make, a difference in an election, you know, and they do sometimes. They, they do draw enough votes away from a major party sometimes to tip, the election to, uh, somebody else. Um, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I was about to say the only time you hear about third parties is like, that dang third party stole away our election.
Yeah, like Ralph Nader got blamed for George W. Bush winning, uh, in two thousand because, you know, and then Jill Stein of the Green Party got, uh, blamed for Donald Trump winning against Hillary Clinton.
Yeah, I think they also blamed the next, uh, Libertarian candidate is like Joe Jorgensen or whatever. Something Jorgensen. They blamed her for Donald Trump losing.
Right, so, yeah, they always, they always, you know, are, um, kind of like be, but people have a tendency to vote for the major parties because they wanna vote for a party that has a chance of winning. And, and, and third parties generally don't have a chance of winning. So now, of course, sometimes there will be so many people like voting third party that it will break into the electoral column. And that's when the big parties have to take notice, uh, like for instance, the populist party, you know, that, took a bunch of states out west and took a huge chunk of the vote. And people were like, okay, populist party, we really need to pay attention. And so the, like, what will happen at that point is that one of the major parties will try to co-opt, all those voters away from that third party. Um, but sometimes that third party will become one of the two major parties. Like for instance, that's how the Republican Party got started was it started out as a third party, then the Whig Party was just fatally split. And so the Republican Party just kind of went from being a third party to being like, uh, it, it just stepped into the gap and became one of the two major parties. So, um, you know, it's interesting how that sometimes will work. Yes, Ethan.
You think we'll ever see another party transition where the party, the two parties get shaken up and standing?
You know, it's, it's what they call a realignment, a political realignment. So if you ever take poly sci, um, you know, like, or, you know, and you talk about this in government class too, but, uh, it's where, you know, you have a coalition of groups that all support a particular party. But sometimes like usually in a time of crisis, whether it be economic crisis or, um, you know, war or something like.
Totally not related to possible future events and events right now.
Let's hope not, man. Let's hope that the peace, uh, continues because it's, it's no fun to go through those kind of things. It really, really isn't. And you know, you guys are just getting to the age where, you know, like.
Yeah, that military draft's coming, that, that age coming up.
That would be a, a most unpleasant experience, uh, so.
I mean, Canada's all, if Canada and New Zealand's always on the books.
So, yeah, so anyway, um, but yeah, i- it's usually at times of great national turmoil and stress, that you see a realignment of the parties. So anyway, uh, the Gold Bug Democrats, uh, are a, a, a minor factor in this election here. And come on, work. Alright, my, there it goes. It's starting to go real slow there for some reason.
They're cutting out quite a bit.
Yeah, looks like my internet's not, not, not the greatest here. Um, okay, alright, so that takes us to the election of eighteen ninety-six, which is considered to be, uh, the quote, birth of modern politics, okay? Uh, and essentially, which one wins? The great populist speech maker or the great advertising campaign? If you're looking at the. It's the advertising campaign, yes. Okay, so.
It's always ads.
Yeah, uh, I mean, uh, the, the solid south goes Democrat, um, the, the west, like got absorbed into the Democratic Party, the populist west. But that advertising campaign did work in the north especially, and over on the coast as well. But really, um, this was where the Republicans focused almost all of their efforts and they were able to get critical states to all vote Republican. And as a result, William McKinley will become our twenty-fifth president. Um, and, uh, you know, we're gonna talk more about how this works, but this has become kind of like one of those, those little object lessons in politics. Money matters, okay? So like, from here on out, you're gonna see, polit- both major political parties are going to be turning more and more towards money, not just to hire campaign workers, but to run ads. And is that still the case today? Like, go ahead, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Well, yeah, definitely there are a lot more ads. Also, doesn't this have the problem of basically increasing the business, uh, interest in campaigns by tenfold?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, I need that, I, I don't just need to have this campaign workers, I need to, to buy ads. I need tons of money. So of course, these deep pockets, big business, of course, you know, it's going to increase their.
It's basically just increases the business problem even more, like it has to come to a breaking point at some point.
Yeah, so it, it really is going to drive, you know, this, this huge, um, kind of, and, and it is still like, you look at elections today, they're, you know, um, the parties are beholden to these giant corporations, you know, that, that pump, you know, millions and millions of dollars into campaigns. Um, but I wanna say this about President McKinley. Puppet, puppet master, puppet. See, my cursor is on McKinley. Puppet master, my cursor is on Hannah. Hannah has the perfect candidate for big business. They love this guy, um, President McKinley. And basically, President McKinley is going to do whatever the Republicans want. So here are some of the big changes that are coming. First of all, big business is going to get the gold standard. So the Gold Standard Act of nineteen hundred, which McKinley will sign into law, is going to make gold the only thing that the dollar is redeemable in. And the dingly tariff is going to raise the tariff back to its previous levels. Um, and so the tariff, and the dollar on the gold standard are, are what big business really, really wants. And so they get those things. But they also want to distract the people with something else. And they know that there is a, is a issue that is popular among the American people that, could basically make McKinley popular as well. And that is the issue of imperialism. Uh, making America into an imperial power. And so they're going to basically, uh, give the jingoes, which is what the people who want America to have an empire were now being called. Um, they're gonna give the jingoes, the pro-imperialist people, what they want. They're going to give them, the war they have been searching for. Yes, Jacob.
So how many imperialists were there in Congress? I'm assuming there's a lot for them to be able to get this much traction.
Uh, actually, that's an excellent question. Um, there is going to be, really, um, Congress is the one that declares war. And there is going to be enough anti-imperialist in the Senate, that they're not going to be able to get a de- declaration of war without adding an amendment in to make them happy. So you are asking a very important question, which is like, how many, im- pro-imperialist candidates are there in Congress? Actually, it kind of goes along party lines. Um, and really the Senate is where you will have more anti-imperialist Democrats, who, um, are going to make it so there won't be a declaration of war until something is done to make them happy, uh, to satisfy them, that, that maybe this isn't about acquiring land. Maybe it is about human rights, you know, et cetera. So, um, yeah, e- essentially that is the answer to your question right there.
So, was it the time the Senate controlled by the Democrats, which is one reason why it didn't get passed through and the House was controlled by the Republicans? Which is how they were able to get the, it through the House, or were they able to be declared, but not through the Senate?
Um, I would have to look back and see if that were the case, but, um, most likely that is the case. Uh, I just know that there are enough anti-imperialists, which are mostly Democrats, in the, um, Senate, that they are going to be unable to get a declaration of war that they want. Um, because they're basically, you know, uh, concerned about America going against its founding principles, and, you know, doing to others what was done to us and that sort of thing. And so, um, um, yeah, so when we get to, uh, so you, I, I would have to look to, to, to make sure that that was right, but it does, generally tend to fall along party lines. Um, yeah, um, Brady.
Go ahead.
Be jumping ahead of you a bit, but I wanna make sure I got a chance to ask, um.
Yes.
For Cuban independence and whatnot, didn't McKinley like, just kind of start a war with Spain for very little reason?
The Spanish-American War is coming up and isn't it really convenient to be able to distract everybody from their economic woes? With war, you know, and, and, and stuff going on elsewhere in the world and, and, and whatnot, so.
Who cares about our money? We're at war, bro.
Hey, man, you know, like suck it up and do what you gotta do economically because the country's at war, you know, we need to, we need to hold together, you know, it's, it, it is a very convenient way to get people to unite, uh, politically.
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering how far though can that distraction go before people like just start breaking down mentally?
Yeah, right, exactly. I mean, there are limits to, um, you know, uh, you, you're kind of tapping into patriotism, you're tapping into nationalism, you're, 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 uh, you know, of course, Ameri- people want America to be a great power. They want us to be up there on a par with the other big European powers and.
I think, though, it's like self-preservation's a very, very strong instinct.
Right. And so like, you know, in a financial panic, like it's gonna be hard and people are gonna suffer. It's just like, who's gonna bear the brunt of the suffering? Is it gonna be the, the, the laborers, which generally speaking it is, or is it gonna be businesses and?
Yeah, it seems like whenever broad force goes on the business, they say, it's because of you, laborers, I'm gonna shift this blame on you.
They're very good at manipulating things, uh, because of course, they can afford to hire those very clever lawyers, those high-priced lawyers who will, uh, um, shift things in their favor. Alright, um.
Yeah, we're probably gonna see the whole thing of, oh, the, they blew up the main though, like forty years later, we found out it was just a boiler explosion. But oh well, too late.
We're getting to, we're getting to all that, yeah. And, uh, it'll be interesting, you know, if, uh, i- if, if, financial crisis happens, you know, uh, in America, in like nowadays, will, will there be a war that will distract everybody, you know, et cetera? Kind of, it's, it's, these things have a tendency to repeat themselves in history. So it is, it is interesting how that all plays out, um.
Yeah, but. I think the problem with that nowadays is that, uh, industry and military arms isn't really put by.
Right, yeah, it, it doesn't.
Of the whole labor force.
Right, it doesn't have as much of an impact as it once did and especially.
Kind of a self-autonomous unit at this.
Right, our, our manufacturing base is elsewhere, um, you know, we don't really have people working in huge numbers in factories anymore. Uh, uh, war has become so mechanized and so, you know, fought by robots and drones and things like that, that it's not as, uh, i- i- it's a little different world now, but you never know, we'll see, someone may try it. Um, I do wanna get to a couple people here because we are hitting, uh, the time where we, we are, we're gonna call it, uh, so, um, Brady, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I thought of something else about McKinley. Finally remembered why I even know this guy's name, but, uh, I know, I know he was like super, I, I guess corrupt and going for the, uh, big businesses, but why did he get shot?
We're, we're gonna talk about that. That is, that has to, has to do with a trend around the world where world leaders are getting assassinated, by anarchists. Um, and it has really nothing to do with, um, you know, like, McKinley ticking off a certain, you know, uh, group of people in the United States. It's not like the political lower class is rising up to, you know, assassinate him for, for whatever reason. Uh, but, um, yeah, it, it, there's like, uh, the Tsar. Uh but um yeah, it it there's like uh the Tsar of Russia. Uh is is assassinated in the eighteen nineties, uh Tsar Alexander the second, um with a a bomb that is thrown under his carriage by some anarchists. Uh the King of Italy, King uh, I think it was Umberto the first. Um is assassinated by an anarchist and um an American president is also assassinated by an anarchist, so. Um yeah, it it anarchism and we're gonna talk about that as is just like, it's a trend at this time in history, it's it's something that becomes like. It's it's a vogue thing for like far, far, you know, left-wing radicals essentially, uh Jacob, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Is there like any proof that the Spanish-American War might have been the half the doing of the imperious and half the the doing of uh the. Businessmen who wanted to distract the rest of the people of America from the economic problems just by saying there's a war? So is it partially economic and political and partially imperialist?
Well, I mean, what you would have to do to prove that is you would have to find primary sources where they wrote down, you know, what. They were basically really motivated by and a lot of that is done in like backroom conversations where the, you know, they they don't write it down. They they just talk about it, you know, um so there is.
I gotta leave the meeting.
But we can, yeah, right, it there's a lot of circumstantial evidence to to kind of say that, yes, there is a uh an attempt here to. You know, distract people from their economic woes and of course, it is going to boost industry and it is going to, you know, at this time in history. Um you know, manufacturing is something that is very much uh centered in America, so. When you're looking at making things, it is going to put Americans to work, um so you know, it it it'll definitely boost the economy some as well.
Yeah, Dr. Johnson, yeah, I gotta go.
Okay, uh and Jacob, uh that's a really good question, I would have to look to see if there were primary sources, off the top of my head, I cannot think of any. Um but uh you know, if uh if there are and I come across them, I will, I will definitely uh. You know, tell you about them, but um yeah, uh that's that's the only proof that that we as historians have is is primary sources. But there's a ton, there's a ton of circumstantial evidence that suggests that the the big business interests are looking to distract people. Um as well.
Well, historically, every time a big war has come around, the United States has pulled itself out of uh economic problems because of industry.
Hmm, yes, interesting how those patterns always seem to repeat themselves.
Like this war, the First World War, the Second World War.
Well, okay, yeah, and sometimes like when we're talking world wars, we're talking about something that starts over in Europe, you know, for.
Yeah.
Reasons, right, but it is interesting how, yeah, that does have a tendency to pull us out of financial problems, hmm. Yeah, but remember, we, every time that happens, it's most Americans work in factories, we have a manufacturing base. But that's not necessarily the case anymore, like much of the manufacturing that is done now for our companies is done overseas. Uh or across the border in Mexico, so uh where labor is cheaper, uh so. It'll, it might be a little different nowadays, but um but yeah, so anyway, um excellent discussion, guys, uh and I will see you all in class. If you haven't gotten your National History Day stuff to me, please do, because it it really is having a huge effect on the grade and everything, so. Uh have a great rest of your weekend and a and a great Super Bowl Sunday, um I'll see you all later.